Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's, I kind of get, now that I don't have you sitting in front of me, I just, you're gonna give me the signal and tell me when we're live? We live? All right. Good morning, everybody. This is a Monday, August 31st. This is the rescheduled meeting from previously last week. Unfortunately, last week, we had some technical difficulty with our equipment and seems like Zoom had some challenges across the nation. So, we apologize, but we are back and agendized properly and noticed properly for today's meeting. So with that, we will call and order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Monday, August 31st. And with that, Madam Vice Chair, will you lead us in a salute to the fact?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right. And as we are continuing to follow the Governor's Directive on social distancing, and we still are joining many of you via Zoom or telephonically, there are, the chambers are still closed to the public. However, we are delivering West staff to get those back open soon. And with that, Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Certainly. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung via telephone.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeannie Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney Dave Watts Vial via Zoom.
No, Nathan Edwards this morning.
Okay, thank you, Nate.
Yep.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. With that, Mr. Manager, we are on to item three, public comment.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Awesome. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments submitted?
We do have a voicemail and an email this morning.
All right. And first, we have a voicemail from Ms. Carol Black, and so we'll play that now.
Okay, and Ms. Black did submit written comments, which she mentions in her voicemail, and I will place those on the record for the meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, can we play the voicemail?
Carol Black, for Washoe County Commissioners Meeting, August 31st, Agenda Item Number Three. As you know, I'm a resident of Incline Village and a retired physician. I have sent two separate comments on different topics to be read into the record today. I later learned that sending comments to be read is no longer an option. My internet is too variable to rely on Zoom and precludes my speaking for long periods of time. So I'm recording one brief summary of each item and requesting the Commissioners please read and consider the submitted documents. First, Tahoe area area quality monitoring. Wildfire smoke is a no health risk and appropriate interventions include various levels of avoidance matched to the level of pollutants, the most important being small particle PM 2.5. Other pollutants also factor, including ozone and larger particles, PM 10 and others. Currently, there are very limited permanent EPA certified sensors at Tahoe with only an ozone sensor in Incline Village, Washoe County, Nevada. There is a Tahoe City PM 2.5 sensor and a South Lake Tahoe PM 10 sensor, but no data to demonstrate metric applicability to the Incline Village, Washoe County Tahoe area. With smoke settling over the lake from distant fires, I'm asking that you review and remedy this situation to provide accurate key indicator metrics for health safety interventions and environmental monitoring in the Washoe County Tahoe area. Next topic, Tahoe area occupancy, trash tourism. Seeing much review of recent tourist influx into the Tahoe area with challenges including trash, traffic, parking, sunfires, crowding and social distance mash and mass failures with likely virus risk. Plus, there are known challenges with first responder staffing and evacuation capacity, yet area occupancy, a root cause, is not addressed. Please see document estimates of short-term rental impact on Incline Village area occupancy, people and vehicles, showing as much as 50% increase in average area occupancy in busy season from short-term rental growth over the four to five-year period ending in 2019. 2019 data is still pending in a typical year for sure with lots of beach and trail use. So in addition to issue-specific plans, please address total area occupancy versus infrastructure capability, safe area capacity to target feasible, safe tourism levels. Creative approaches are needed with out-of-spacings or options considered. Thank you very much.
All right, wonderful. So Mrs. Black's comments will be placed on the record and also her written statement. And next, we have Gina Barbida, and she has submitted an email. Madam Clerk, can you read that into the record, please?
I will. This particular email is addressed, Dear Von, I am requesting that my letter be read as public input during the short-term rental Agenda Item discussion at the next Washoe County Commissioners Meeting. And she's, this is a photo below of what regularly happens at homes in Incline Village that are used as short-term rentals. This house is two doors down from ours and regularly rented short-term. Short-term renters have no idea how important the garbage ordinances are in our community. Even if the property owners leave the strict garbage rules written for their renters, most of the time renters don't read or abide by them. Bears quickly learn which houses don't properly dispose of garbage, so of course, they frequently break into those houses. This photo is of a mother with her two cubs. At the time of this photo, the mother had, the mother bear had one yellow tag in her ear because she broke into a house. She subsequently received a second yellow tag in her other ear. After her third documented break-in, likely due to garbage rule violations, this mother bear was euthanized by law enforcement, and we believe it was due to problems with this specific house and the several other short-term rentals in our neighborhood. The owners of the house directly across the street from ours regularly leave for extended periods of time, six to 12 months, and rent their house short-term while they're gone. That house sleeps 16 people. Last summer, when that house was rented short-term, we often had 10-plus cars parked illegally right across the street from our house. If there was a fire, there would not have been adequate room for fire trucks to properly gain access to protect us and our neighbors' lives and homes. The house directly adjacent to ours and the photo, the house in this photo is scheduled to close escrow next week. We're told the people who bought it are from New York. We are praying that these new owners do not choose to rent that house short-term, but due to the current Washoe County short-term rental ordinances we have, we have no way to prevent that house from being rented short-term or from preventing the quiet, clean and safe neighborhood we bought into from being quickly stolen from us. If three houses on the street where you live suddenly transitioned to become short-term rentals, you would immediately experience a dramatic increase in noise at all hours of day and night. The amount of cars parked on your street and in front of your house would suddenly skyrocket. You would likely see a dramatic increase in wildlife, raccoons, rats, coyotes, mice raiding rental houses' garbage cans because garbage would inappropriately be left outside and your neighborhood community would decline. As a result, I feel confident you too would be very upset and come to the same conclusion that we have. The current STR ordinances must be completely revised to protect the full-time residents of our Incline Village community. We have been very adversely affected by the current STR guidelines and need Washoe County Incline Village STR guidelines to be completely revised to match those of Las Vegas. Just as in Las Vegas, short-term rentals must be required to hold a commercial business license. Short-term rentals are businesses. Houses, and that concludes Ms. Barbarita's three minutes. I will place the rest of these comments on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have anybody via Zoom joining us that would have any public comment this morning? All right, seeing no hands, what we'll do is close public comment, bring it back to the board, and we are on to item four, Mr. Manager.
Item four is Commissioner and County Managers' announcements, reports and updates to include Boards and Commission updates, requests for information or topics for future agendas.
All right, Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning that you would like to add?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a few items by way of update. First, I'd like to point out to the public that we are making plans to reopen the chambers to a limited number of public attendees in accordance with the state and CDC guidelines. We're hopeful we can do that as soon as our next scheduled meeting, which would be September 8th next week. So, we've heard you and we're moving in that direction as soon as is practical. Secondly, I'd like to point out that next week also on the 8th, the county, along with seven other counties here in California, that's California, in Nevada, will be launching the Small Business Assistance Program for those businesses that have been negatively financially impacted by the COVID pandemic. This is at the request of Vice Chair Burke Bigler and others on the, on the, on the Commission. We are partnering with Nevada Association of Counties, NACO, to adopt their program, and it gets underway next week. You can go to www.naco.org for more information, and there will be a press release announcing such in the next day or so. Thirdly, I'd like to report that as, as the Commissioners know, within the last couple of weeks, we were able to fully open the Our Place facility over on the NAMs campus, and it has been a fabulous success in that regard, but as we sit here this morning, the facility is totally full. So we're gonna have to, we're working with Amber Howell and the HSA Group, Kate Thomas and others to utilize some additional shelter space potentially on that campus to take care of the overflow. Some of this is being driven, again, by the social distancing requirements associated with COVID, which were not anticipated at the time that Our Place was developed. We do think we'll be able to accommodate it, but it's gonna take more than we thought, and I, I sense that as the number of evictions and people who have been displaced or unemployed continues to grow, we as a region will see additional need for these kinds of services, but I did want to report that to you. And then, I did, there's been a lot of communication with the Office of the County Manager asking about short-term rentals. I do want to point out to the public that if you didn't, if you weren't on the call last week, the Chair, with the suggestion of staff, we've delayed rescheduling that so that we can do some more work to, to improve that, that proposal. So if you didn't hear that, it won't be heard today, but we'll be bringing it back to the Commission after we have a chance to address some of the concerns that have been raised by the public, and I just wanted to point that out. And, Mr. Chair, I think that's all I have for this morning.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, next signed in, I have Madam Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. I appreciate that the STR regulation is being reviewed because I know all of you have received letters from the constituents in Incline Village regarding, and Crystal Bay, somewhat in Crystal Bay, regarding the many problems that are associated with that. And I know that on the record, that this morning, that picture of those lovely bears, that is a constant problem in Incline Village. Lots of people who are coming over obviously don't understand that they're in bear country and then they leave doors open and bears go in the house and they leave food out and it's, you know, it's just really very frightening and much of a problem for all the residents up there who feel like they're now living in the middle of a, in a vacation rental haven. And so it's, it is a problem for the residents who are there full-time. One other issue that relates to Incline Village, and this seems really loud to me, so I'll move back a little bit. One other issue that relates to Incline Village is the question of whether or not we can get trucks off of Country Club Drive. For those of you who have taken Country Club off 431, which is essentially Mount Rose Highway, it is fairly steep and very curvy, and there is no place for trucks who lose their brakes to, to go off. It's a narrow two, not a, not a really narrow, but not a really wide, two-lane street either, and there is no place to build a ramp for trucks who have lost control on the street. And it is a danger and a concern for residents who live along that street, and I wonder if we can't prohibit trucks from going down Country Club? If there isn't some way to prohibit trucks or to put in some kind of traffic smoothing control-type stuff that would still allow fire trucks and ambulances to get through because, of course, we don't want to interfere with that. But at the same time, we don't want to have an accident where a big truck goes off and goes through somebody's house. And trucks are going down Country Club because they, it's faster into town, and so they don't want to go all the way down and go through the roundabout and come into town that way, which is, of course, the better way for them to go. So I would like to ask, Mr. Manager, if you could have staff look into that. That would, that's really an area where we have some concerns. And then, one other question that has come up repeatedly is the question of parking trailers, campers, et cetera, long-term on streets. Not on your street even, but on just any street. What's happening in Incline Village now with all of the COVID people, and it was a bit of a problem before, but it's a serious problem now. People bring their boats up, they go, launch their boats, and then they just go find a place to park their trailer because there are no, all of the trailer parking lots are full, and so they have no place to park their trailer. So they're just parking it on people's streets. And they're doing the same thing with campers and then coming back after a day in the lake and spending the evening in the campers. And so, I'm not, you know, that wouldn't be allowed here in the city of Reno. I'm not sure what the county regulations for unincorporated county are, but it would seem that that's something that we shouldn't be allowing. I did have a conversation with the Sheriff Balaum about that, and he has indicated to me, he's hoping that once we get the two new deputies up there, that will resolve some of this problem, where they can ticket these vehicles and, and trailers, and then, if necessary, tow them away. But I think that's something that needs to be at the top of our list of things to be worried about for the people in Incline Village. I, I did want to also thank the sheriff for the response back on Mr., let me, Don Dyke Anukum. The sheriff did get back to me and say that, yes, the problem isn't that they couldn't issue an arrest warrant. The problem is, and they did do that, the problem is that they can't, because it's considered a misdemeanor, they can't ask for those people who injured him to be brought back to Nevada to be prosecuted. However, if they ever come back to Nevada and get picked up, they will be prosecuted. Still, we have this gentleman who was injured, and I, I do need to correct something. I misspoke when I talked about him at the last meeting where I said, I believe he was hit in the head several times by the mayor's gavel. Actually, he was kicked. He did contact me and say that he wasn't hit with a gavel, he was kicked several times and, and injured. And so I do, it is still, continues to be a concern that we have Nevada citizens who are being injured by somebody who lives out of state, and we're not able to bring them back to be prosecuted, and that is a concern in a lot of ways. I do want to also remind the Commission and staff that we were, we discussed the issue of whether or not we would put a 15% cap on groups that, that deliver food to different people, that, that what we're seeing, and I know Clark County did put a 15% cap on and a requirement that the, that the restaurant could not take their, their, a higher cut out of the delivery service. But what we're seeing is they're, they're charging as much as 30% in some cases, higher. And we have a lot of seniors who are living on fixed income and can't get out because of COVID. And what, so what's happening is it's costing them way more than it should cost them just to order food and have it delivered in. And I think that's something that we as the Commission should take a serious look at and, and really step into it. Mr. Chair, obviously, thank you for the, again, for the kind words and thoughts on STR. And I know that you are working with staff on looking at how we can fix that problem. And so with that, I will say thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, next I have Commissioner Herman signed in.
And what I wanted to say was that I can hardly wait to see your faces out here in the audience at these meetings. It's kinda just too quiet neary, so I'll be looking forward to that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've got several things. Can we bring something back, just some explanation on the COVID Task Force? I've got some citizens that would like to serve, and so I, I think it behooves us to understand where we can draw them from and that they understand it as well. I have another issue, had, had a fellow reach out, and I think all of you have received emails from him with respect to opening youth sport practices. And he feels that it can be done effectively and efficiently, so it, I mean, if, if we can somehow fit it in and it can be allowed, I think, I think it would be good. I mean, it's healthy to get these kids out, outside, not so much in the smoke right now, but of course, on, on clear air days and get them back to practicing again. STRs, and, and I just, I wanted to chime in quickly with the Board. We cannot have a one-size-fits-all code. It's just not, the, the issues that are being experienced in Incline Village do not pertain to other areas. I'll use the example of the unincorporated area of Spanish Springs. Why would we make them have a bear box and adhere to, you know, some of the parking standards when we don't have those same problems? Many people don't understand that the cities will have their own STR codes. So, we would only be dealing with the unincorporated areas of Washoe County. So we, I mean, we have to look at those areas very carefully, and, and I don't think that this is an anomaly in our, our policy and our code. Look at our regional plan. Area plans are all different, every single one of them is different. And we have a, a very different structure in, in, in places like Washoe Valley versus, say, Spanish Springs or Verdai or Cold Springs or Palomino Valley. So, I, I think it just behooves us to look at a code that, that is not going to just look at Incline Village with respect to how we administrate that. And then, finally, I'm gonna keep this on the front burner. I'd like staff to continue to work with us at RTC and with NDOT to get a signalization or get the corner of Sunset Springs and Egyptian signaledized. It's a, it's a dangerous intersection. School is back in session now. School buses have to cross five lanes of traffic if they go from Sunset Springs straight across to Egyptian, across Pyramid Highway. And people are speeding up as they come off of the two-lane from Pyramid Highway. So, we really need to, we really need to look at this from the perspective of, of, let's be proactive and not reactive. And sadly, many times, that's exactly what happens to us, and it's an NDOT right-of-way. So we do have to adhere to their standards and, and their warrants, but the warrants on that intersection have been met. So it's, it's just a matter of trying to figure out how to get it on the ground. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I have a couple of things to add this morning. As you know, I do continue to operate as the liaison for Washoe County to the LEAP Team, the local empowerment advisory panel that works with the Governor's Office to deliver a coordinated effort in regards to how we write policy and directives for reopening and how we move forward with COVID throughout the community. I did travel to Las Vegas on Friday to work with the LEAP Team and the Governors in regards to potential on what conventions could look like in our state. Some very interesting conversation that took place down there between the strip properties, the state, the state doctor, the Governor's Office and the LEAP Team and a number of the gaming control board. Some interesting things to go forward with, so hopefully we get some, some kind of guidance and direction out of that. We have been working on that. As you pointed out, Commissioner Hartung, discussions about youth sports, this is something that's broad-based across the state. And I think some, to your comments earlier as well, the challenges are that every community is different. Las Vegas and Clark County are very different than Washoe, Reno and Sparks, which are very different than some of our rural communities as it pertains to the COVID impact to that community, the type of schools, the type of sports, and just the environment as a whole. And so as we continue to look at that, practices, you know, we have tried to push a lot of that governance back to the counties specifically on which that happens within. Our county has allowed, under youth sports, the, you know, continued allowance of, the continued allowance of practicing with your teams. However, there are no scrimmages or, or games or spectatorless games at this point. We're still working on that direction and how that would count, how that, what that would look like. So that's gonna take some time. And, but we're hoping that we get there soon, soon enough. And, you know, through the discussions that we've had with the LEAP Team, there are a number of different issues. But some of the bigger, bigger ones that I kind of want to bring up this morning are some challenges that affect us right here. And I know it's been kind of a topic of conversation just this weekend with bars. We've had a number of discussions with the manager and his staff in regards to bars in Washoe County, Reno and Sparks. Now, the challenges kind of lie with the enforcement, and I'm gonna urge people that we are still in a health crisis, a public health crisis that affects us all. And whether you believe it or you don't, there are many people out there that feel that this is a very serious issue and needs to be conducted as such. And so we ask, and then, we ask in the benefit of everybody. You know, you make a choice whether you can go in or out of a business. You make a choice whether or not to leave your home. If you so choose to leave your home, please wear a mask. If you so choose to frequent a bar, please wear a mask, socially distance. These are just simple requests, maybe not for your, maybe not for your specific need, but also, there are many people out there that want to go out and, and also need to shop and whatnot. And the challenges that we're seeing is that for some of these bars that we would allow and some of these restaurants, the compliance is not being followed, and it's very difficult. Washoe County has done, in the unincorporated area, we're seeing businesses respond at a very high level, almost 96% compliance. However, some of our businesses within the cities of Sparks and Reno are not finding this directive to be as serious as they feel it should be and aren't taking that compliance heavily. And so we are working with the city staff at the city of Reno and city of Sparks to work on compliance and enforcement of those, of those rules because it's in the benefit of all of us to open businesses back up to get some of these small bars and whatnot. And what I would ask and what I have urged on the LEAP Team many a times is that we should be in control of that type of enforcement and that type of management. I know the state makes a broad-based discussion when they close down bars in a certain county due to the directive, but the, the actions of a few bad actors have massive impact on those that are adhering to the directive and trying to sustain their businesses. So as we continue to move through this, it's a very challenging time for a number of people. I would ask that we continue to work together for the benefit of everybody, and until we can encourage the state to turn that enforcement over to us full-heartedly so that we can, and we are, the manager has worked diligently with staff to put together plans. They submitted a plan two weeks ago to the Governor's Task Force, COVID Task Force, for renew, for submittal on that discussion point of bars. However, that was turned down due to a weak enforcement level. And so we are going to go back to them this week, hopefully with another updated plan and new numbers on the directive, and continue to work towards rapid testing and molecular testing that is quick turnaround. And we're also doing updated COVID contact tracing. There is an app that has been downloaded, that you can download it off of Apple called COVID Trace. You just could play type in COVID Trace Nevada. It's very easy. It's an app that you can download on either Google or Apple, Apple Store to your thing. It will give you information on those around you and allows us to continue to trace those who've been sick around us. So we're trying to get a handle on this, and it's a very difficult thing, but- But I would ask people to continue to take this very seriously as we continue to move through this. So with that, that concludes my comments this morning. But this is, once again, this is not, this is not something to continue to laugh at or take, take lightly. Kids are back in school. We are still seeing outbreaks. Now, I say not outbreaks, but we are seeing individuals in schools that are doing, that are becoming positive. The school district is handling that diligently and we're, we're working with them to trace those individuals and, and students and employees and whatnot. Make sure that our schools remain safe for all of our students across Washoe County. So with that, please, please remain vigilant for the sake of our economy, for the sake of our, our community, for the sake of our children and our, our loved ones. This is still a challenging time. We're all trying to figure this out and no one exactly has all of the answers. We're just trying to piece this together with the best information we have at this time. So with that, I will conclude my comments for today. Mr. Manager, anybody else? One last round?
Commissioner Jung?
Commissioner Jung, do you have anything? I don't believe so. She sent me a message saying she did not have anything to add.
Okay.
But, and I don't hear you chiming in, so we'll...
I have a thing to say, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Commissioner Jung, go ahead.
I just have one tiny thing to say, which is giant thank you to you and staff and the manager for the heavy lifts that I know you're doing behind the scenes. And I believe I can speak for the whole commission to say, just let us know what you want to do and we'll do it. But I tell you, I sleep better at night knowing that you're on top of this and that you are collecting all the data from all the different communities. And most importantly, getting these kids back in school is going to open up the economy and creative convention gatherings, which we know drives our economy. So hats off. Well done, sir. I'll write a letter to the editor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right. Seeing no further comments from any of the commissioners or the manager, we'll close item four. And we are on to item five. This is our consent agenda, everybody. The consent agenda is in your packets for discussion. And Madam Vice Chair, I have you sign it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted, on the consent agenda, before we take a motion to, to approve it or pull anything else, I just wanted to take the time to point out in 5G1, oops, I keep poking myself in the eye here, in 5G1 that the Walter S. Johnson Foundation gave us $10,000 with no county match to purchase laptops for foster youth in Washoe County's custody in light of the digital learning. And I just wanted to give them a thank you very much. This is a great time for businesses to step forward and help out with these kinds of things, so. And if there are no other issues, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hartung. With, do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk, signed in?
No, sir.
All right, see no, any public comment from Zoom? See no public comment from, at all? We'll bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, we are on to the end of our, we are on to a block vote. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block vote for us this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do. I would propose and make a motion that we put in a block vote. Item seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
All right, I have a motion for block of items seven through 16. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Hartung. All right, any discussion on any of these items at this point? Mr. Manager, will you read these into the record, please?
Mr. Chair, Nate Edwards here, real quick. The item number that you and I had talked about.
Item 17?
Yeah, is that for, is that the disclosure item?
That's not in the block.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Manager?
Okay, item number six. I'm sorry. Item number seven. Okay, recommendation to retroactively adopt Resolution R 20-25 to temporarily reduce reclaimed water to, water use rates by 50% for the 2020 irrigation season to encourage improved management practices of reclaimed water irrigation increased use. Adjusted rates would be effective retroactively to the January 2020 billing cycle. And that's a community services item. Item number eight is a recommendation to authorize the construction manager at risk, MWH contractors and KG Walters Construction, a joint venture and approve the owner C Mar Construction Agreement to procure and supply enclosed screw pumps and perforated plate escalator screen under a guaranteed maximum price agreement that GMP dash to a separate guaranteed maximum price agreement for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility 2020 Expansion Project in the amount of $1,236,283. That's a community services item. Recommend, item number nine is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and Jacobs Engineering Group retroactive to August 28, 2020 through December 31, 2024 to provide final design engineering services for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation 2020 Facility Expansion Project within the South Truckee Meadow Water Reclamation Facility Service Territory, $12,4,520, community services. Item number 10 is a recommendation to approve the removal of uncollectible accounts receivable totaling $194,450.71 for the accounts per statute of limitations. That's Comptroller's Office. Item 11, recommendation to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of $1,356 in both revenue and expense to the FY21 epidemiology and laboratory capacity CARES subaward retroactive to January 20, 2020 through April 22, 2022, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget amendments, Health District. Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of $8,113,566 in both revenue and expense to the FY21 epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection subaward retroactive to January 20, 2020 through June 30, 2022, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the, the appropriate budget amendments, Health District. Item number 13 is a recommendation to approve the license agreement between Washoe County Health District and ASM Global Reno on behalf of the Reno Sparks Convention, Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority for the Reno Sparks Livestock Events Center in the amount of $326,862, retroactive to June 8, 2020 through June 21, 2021, for use of the RS LEC Parking Events Labor and Security Services for COVID-19 Testing, Health District. Item number 14 is a recommendation to approve and execute the 2021 Agreement to Use Account for Affordable Housing Welfare Set Aside Program by Washoe County between Washoe County and the Nevada Housing Division of the State, of the State of Nevada Department of Business and Industry in the amount of $181.34, no county match, retroactive to July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023, to provide emergency housing assistance. Direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments, Human Services Agency. Did I read that right? It's $181,341. I think I may have read the wrong amount. Item number 15 is a recommendation to update the 911 Emergency Response Five Year Master Plan to include but not be limited to inclusion of, of a plan for public safety answering point, backup sites, a computer aided dispatch upgrade and modification to NRS from the 2019 Nevada State Legislature as recommended by the 911 Emergency Response Advisory Committee on July 16, 2020, Technology Services. Item number 16 is a recommendation and possible action to approve and authorize the chair to sign a compromise and settlement agreement between Washoe County and Betty and Oscar Dykes, the terms of which provide for a payment by Washoe County in the amount of $325,000 in exchange for conveyance by the Dykes to Washoe County of clear title to the properties at Washoe County APN 534-561-06 and APN 534-561-07, upon which the North Spanish Springs Flood Control Authority is constructed. A complete and full settlement of any and all ownership or other claims by the Dykes concerning the county's use and construction of the North Spanish Springs Flood Control Facility, other terms consistent therewith as, as described in the compromise and settlement agreement. Authorize staff to take all actions necessary to finalize and fulfill the terms of the agreement and authorize the chair to sign and execute all documents necessary to effectuate the final conveyance of title to the two properties by the Dykes to Washoe County and any other terms of the agreement, District Attorney.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Under, under discussion, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you. I just wanted to give some clarification on four of the items, actually. So items seven, eight, and nine, your district, Mr. Chair, but it is our South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Piece of infrastructure which I, I'm really proud of. All of that funding is coming from the bonding that we approved earlier and will be paid by ratepayers. And, and many of our ratepayers actually live in the city of Reno. So it's all, this is all ratepayer funded and future ratepayer funded. So there's no Washoe County funds coming out of that whatsoever. That's going to really upgrade that plant. In fact, I look forward to that plant potentially being the first in the valley, in the region to, to get water, to treat it to a Class A plus standard. That's, that's one of the, it's, it's, it's very big for us. So, and I'm, and I'm really proud of all the hard work that staff has done out there, specifically Dwayne Smith and, and of course, Dave Solero, who have led that. And then item number 16, that is in the, the Spanish Springs, the North Spanish Springs Storm Water Utility. This is actually something that I kept asking staff about for quite a number of years. This parcel was to be dedicated from a developer who unfortunately went bankrupt during the 2008 downturn. This was part of the, the, there was a, a project out off of Caide de la Plata called Village at the Green. And this was part of the dedication that they were supposed to give Washoe County as, as part of the, the terms and conditions of approval for that project. The project never went through. The land ended up reverting back to the bank. The bank sold it for other things. The, the current property owners have paid in, but the, but the dedication kind of got lost in limbo. So I asked staff about it many, many times because it was still listed under the Dyke's name. And we were, and it had already been included in the Storm Water Utility. The $325,000 is completely paid for by the Storm Water Utility and is not paid for by general tax fund, is not coming out of the general fund in any way, shape or form. Those are all ratepayers in Spanish Springs. That's all I have. I appreciate it and ready to vote, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Is there any public comment on any of the items, Madam Clerk?
I have no email public comment.
Anybody on Zoom? Nope, saying no on Zoom as well. Commissioner Jung, do you have any comments or discussion on any items in the block vote?
No, thank you. I, I will support it.
Okay, all right. I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. We are now on to item six. Mr. Manager?
Yes, item six is a presentation Jeff Clark in the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. It's a presentation and update of the FY19 24th Quarter Status Report for the Washoe County Regional Detention Facility to Include Security of the Jail, Conditions of Confinement, Staffing and Medical Care of Inmates Housed at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Acknowledge receipt of the report. I believe Jeff is available to us.
Fantastic. And I believe Mr. Clark is joining us via Zoom this morning. Mr. Clark, are you there with us? Can you hear us, sir?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commission, and Mr. Manager.
All right, Mr. Clark, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen here, see if I can bring up the jail status report. Is the jail status report up?
It is, sir. We can see it. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to present before the county commission this morning. What I'm reporting on is the jail status report. The status report was actually submitted several months ago and, and due to COVID, it was postponed. So I will try to update some of the statistics as we go along. My name is, for the record, Jeff Clark. I'm the Chief Deputy for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Detention and Courts Bureau. When we talk about reporting for the welfare of the inmates, we really talk about the overall health of inmates within the custody of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. We also discuss access to medical care for all inmates, infectious disease and burn control, which truly, over the last several months, we've been tested through, with COVID in our infectious disease programs. Food services, we are, we still try to maintain feeding all of our inmates for under a dollar a meal, which is just incredible. And, and our staff really gets a lot of credit for finding the best deals on food because we've, we've really increased the overall presentations and values of our foods. Environmental controls within the facility, the safety of all of our inmates, and certainly out of cell time or tier time, that includes visits and everything else. So during, during this, this last fiscal year, obviously, we've had a lot of trials and tribulations involving COVID in the, you know, within our community. And our, so our numbers have gone down in the jail. But what we haven't seen, we've actually seen an increase in our mental health population during these trying times. Our Housing Unit Three, which is our mental health unit, is at capacity and regularly our special watch cells are, we're in an overflow status. So we have seen an overall decline in overall population at the jail, but not with our mental health. And this is certainly a crisis as, as the entire commission understands within our community mental health. This year, we had over 1,433 averted suicides. Now, averted suicides can be everything from somebody coming in that's intoxicated or high on, on drugs to somebody that's actually within general population. And that is, this should be overwhelming to, to everyone. So this year, we had 24 attempted suicides. I'm very happy to report we did not have any completed suicides this year. And again, I have to credit our staff and, and our training. And we've, we've been partnering with different community stakeholders to increase the training that we're giving to our staff and, and certainly talking about it and training the inmates as well. Also, credit to our, our, our medical provider, NAF Care, who, and Dr. Lawrence, who has a very, very tough job within our facility. Some of the new pilot, or, or new initiatives and pilot programs for the year is, as, as the commission knows, we opened a veterans barracks. And this barracks is, is primarily how, primarily houses our veteran inmates who want the additional resources that we're offering from the community in partnership with the VA. Just on Friday, we had a, a ex-Navy SEAL, an author, come in and do a presentation and talk to the veterans within our custody about, you know, turning their lives around and things like that. And it's... you know, turning their lives around and things like that. And it's, uh, i- it is a great program. We've seen the numbers decline because of our overall population, but we're hanging on to that unit and, and we know that, uh, we're going to be able to track the recidivism and hopefully turn, um, the veterans back on to the path when they re-enter community. We also are starting a, a pilot program for tablets within our facility. What this program will do is allow inmates to have like iPads or tablets, if you will. And this will help us not only with, uh, online visitations and things like that, but it will really help us to get programs to more inmates. Uh, the Commission knows we've been really working hard since Sheriff Balaam was elected at bridging the gap, um, of programs so that inmates really, when they're released from custody, they understand how much help is out there so that they can have a successful transition. The other program that we're, we're working on right now in partnership with the University of Nevada is what's called a virtual housing unit. And this virtual, virtual housing unit will be specific to eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. So we'll be partnering with our, with, uh, Diaz Dixon and, and the Eddie House. And, uh, uh, this is an exciting new venture that will take us into the next fiscal year. COVID, uh, update for the jail. Um, we took COVID extremely serious from the very start. Um, as you know, uh, when, when the jail faces a pandemic or, or faces an outbreak, it can spread across the jail very, very rapidly. This is tested every year during the influenza, uh, season. So when COVID started, um, we took a lot of steps to keep that from spreading or, or even entering the jail. Some of those steps to mitigate COVID threat in the jail is we canceled all personal contacts with the inmates. We didn't want any outside influence coming into the jail. What we did do, though, is we increased iWeb visits and, uh, we talked our, and worked with our vendors to give free telephone calls, free iWeb, um, visits, and also, um, free emails. And really, that was to, to reduce the anxiety of our inmate population and still allow them to be in touch with loved ones and, and everyone else. We canceled all, uh, inmate transports outside of the facility. Uh, this included to courts and, and to, uh, everything, again, to limit, um, the amount of access the inmates had with outside environments. Uh, we canceled all inmate programming, again, to ensure that, that, uh, that we weren't having people from the outside coming into the jail. Uh, those were all canceled. Um, we started a COVID education campaign throughout the facility, so not only staff, but to all of our inmates. That included hanging signs about washing hands and, and social distancing and everything else. Uh, we had our, our medical provider, NAF Care, waive the medical assessment fee so that inmates, if they were ILI or feeling, um, sick, that they would not hesitate to let our staff or medical know. We created an isolation and a quarantine unit from the very start so that if we did see anybody with signs or symptoms, that they would be immediately, uh, isolated and quarantined from the general population. Uh, we also created a COVID nineteen pre-screening station in intake. So before it, uh, arrestees would even come into the facility, our medical staff would meet them, um, outside and in the car. Uh, we would decontaminate and our, our staff would be protected. And then if there were signs, we would take, um, every necessary precaution to ensure that the arrestee had a mask and everybody was protected. Uh, we drew, reduced the number of tier time numbers for social distancing. Uh, we started all, uh, testing all inmates for COVID prior to transfer to general housing. So even today, when an inmate comes in, um, before they're, um, sent out to general housing, they are, uh, quarantined and then they are tested for COVID so that we know that, uh, there are no numbers or no positive COVID, uh, inmates going to general population and infecting the rest of our facility. We also issued masks to all inmates traveling outside their assigned units. So it, when they're in their unit, um, there is not a mask requirement, but if they go out of their unit to a medical appointment, to a court, to anything else, um, they are, uh, now in masks. Recently, just, uh, kind of an update since this presentation is, we've also, uh, written a policy at the Sheriff's Office for all of our staff that we are in masks, uh, it's all the time now. When he, anytime we're in, uh, dealing with the general public in the, or in public places, uh, our staff is required to wear masks. So the wel, welfare of inmates in, in COVID nineteen, uh, these numbers, just to update, you have gone up. Uh, but to date, we've isolated and quarantined over two hundred and thirty-eight inmates and we've tested, uh, a total of a hundred and fourteen inmates to this point. There's been, we've, we get questions often about the number of positive, uh, inmates for COVID nineteen in our jail. To date, we still have not had one positive, uh, test for COVID nineteen in our jail. We have had, is where that asterisk comes in, we have had six inmates, uh, to just this weekend that have come into our facility, uh, with COVID nineteen. And so some of those we've tested because they've said either they had close contact with a family member or something like that. And so we've tested them. So we were able to take precautions and isolate those inmates, uh, even though they were in our facility and they, they, you know, they are COVID positive. We were able to immediately take them to the infirmary, isolate them from any other inmate, and then they're always, uh, cleansing and decontaminating any area where those inmates are. Um, this is, uh, uh, the fourth quarter report for NAF Care. Um, everything's been obviously lower, um, as far as daily population and count. We are starting to see an uptick, uh, in June and, and July. The one thing that I'm really working with NAF Care right now is, as you can see in June, our sick calls, our chronic care sick calls went up astronomically. And, and so that's a concern because I ask our medical staff, does that have to do with, you know, COVID or, or what? So we are keeping our eye on that. It's kind of an anomaly because it was just in June was that, that peak month. Um, and if you look for the chronic care, actual chronic care inmates were remaining, um, pretty steady, but we do, we do have an increase. Another, uh, area on this chart that I would draw your attention to is, is our patients on mental health medication. Um, although it's remained somewhat steady, you can see that's about almost fifty percent of our population is on some type of mental health or psychotropic medication. And, again, um, so the, our NAF Care quarterly stats, as you can see, um, are medical refusals, which aren't necessarily refusals in our jail, but they, we do require them to get a clearance from a hospital. So for that quarter, or for this quarter, we've had twelve, fifty grievances. Uh, grievances can be handled by medical and/or supervisors at the jail. Worker clearances, um, as you know, everything within our jail, from, from laundry services to kitchen services to outside work crew, um, require workers. And so our medical provider does clearances for those workers to ensure that they're in proper health. Uh, ER referrals, these are, um, inmates that, that have a medical need above the scope of what NAF Care can provide here at the jail, and they are sent out to the hospital. Um, and we do have one inmate that is sent out very routinely for his medical conditions. Um, special need flags, uh, sixty-seven for this quarter. And that, that just, uh, a special need flag can be anything from a chronic care to a dietary to another special medical need. And then hopes referrals, we, we still are referring a lot of people to hopes, but we have partnered with a lot of other of our, um, local providers as well. And again, just trying to bridge that gap, um, between the custodial environment and, um, getting back to society. Our booking data, um, as you can imagine, the fourth quarter was down. Um, we had over two, that twenty-five-hundred, two thousand five hundred and ninety-six fewer bookings than we did in the first quarter. You can see on this chart, um, the visits have, have actually stayed relatively high or even gone up a little from, from last quarter. Uh, and this has to do, again, with, they're not onsite visits or in-person visits, but they're iWeb visits. And then you can see our, our total bookings and total releases are, are down. And I have to throw a shout out to our court administrators and, uh, court services. They have done a great job at trying to, uh, you know, they obviously use the risk assessment, but really trying to, uh, keep the jail's numbers low and really prevent COVID from entering the jail and limiting the spread. Another chart on our booking data, this is, you can really see the color from, all the way from back to, um, fiscal years sixteen, seventeen, and this shows how low our numbers have been as far as bookings. Uh, we average over twenty thousand bookings a year, and we will see, obviously, this calendar year, our bookings go way down. Our average daily population, as you can see, is down. In June, we're at, uh, average daily population of eight hundred. Most of you are aware, during our regular, um, times, we're right around eleven hundred, uh, prior to COVID. So we are about eight hundred, um, below that. Again, uh, over the last month, we have started seeing an uptick as businesses start open, as downtown starts opening, um, that the arrest numbers and booking numbers are go up. And so that, uh, we will also see the population grow up. So right now, we're averaging, uh, today, right around nine hundred as our count. Additional fiscal year jail data, um, we, we track, we are starting to track a lot more. Um, the sheriff will be introducing on our, our new website, um, an increase in transparency with statistical data, not only for the jail, but throughout the sheriff's office. And, and, and we've really, uh, starting pulling, pulling data on, uh, the diversity, not only of staff, but inmate populations, arrests, citations throughout the sheriff's office. Anytime that we deal with people, we are tracking that, and that is going to be available to the public on our new website, um, here in the next couple of months. Um, so batteries by inmates, total two hundred and ninety-three. Uh, as you can see, the majority are inmate-on-inmate with fifty-three, inmate-on-staff is thirty-two, and then we were able to avert, um, or stop two hundred and eight fights. Um, suicides, as I had previously mentioned, averted, were at one thousand four hundred and thirty-three, attempted were twenty-four. We had zero completed in this fiscal year. Uh, we, there was, uh, the asterisk right there that you're seeing says Lakes Crossing. And so, uh, the suicide was not committed in our facility, it was actually at, at Lakes Crossing. Um, and, but that, again, is, is the asterisk that it shows an inmate from the sheriff's office and, and, uh, it was actual committed at, at Lakes Crossing. And that's all I have for you. Um, I'm certainly open to questions. I thank you, uh, to the Commission for your time.
Great. Mr. Clark, Deputy Clark, uh, we appreciate, uh, all of your help and, and all the work that, uh, you and the sheriff's office do. Um, we understand how tirelessly difficult it can be in this trying time, especially with COVID, um, for management of our jail, but also the public safety of our community. So with that, I will bring it back to the board for some questions and comments from our Commissioners. So first signed in, I have Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Um, first, uh, Chief Deputy Clark, um, I, I want to wish you just publicly happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years. We were laughing last night because, uh, we did his wedding photography.
You, whose, whose photography haven't you done? That's a better question. Can we talk about, uh, you, when those statements come up, you should say, I haven't done your photography.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, he had a long prosperous career in that. Uh, but I just, I wanted to, I wanted to just, again, congratulate you. Well done.
Thank you very much.
As you know, this report, uh, the impetus for this report is NRS two-eleven-oh-two-oh, which, um, comes under duties, but, but really, this, this is, um, this is good that, that the sheriff's office comes back and gives us this information. It's extremely important. I, I wanted to give you guys kudos for several things, Chief Deputy Clark. I, I, you know, first of all, the meal efficiency, a buck a meal, holy mackerel. I mean, that's, uh, that's, I mean, you guys are just doing something right. And I, I've actually seen the, been up on numerous occasions, the food is, is not, it's not bad. It's, it really isn't. Um, it's, it's pretty amazing, actually, that you guys can do it for a buck a meal. There's a, a couple other things, um, and, and maybe the sheriff will have to answer this at some point, uh, Mr. Clark, but, um, the video arraignments where you, you've canceled all inmate transports outside the facility. And I know, uh, Mr. Chair, you've worked on, on this stuff with the courts for many years and, and I, I gotta, I gotta commend you for it. But I think that, that this is an incredible cost savings for the SO to be able to do those video arraignments and not have to transport those prisoners. Um, it, it's, I, I just, I think it's a very, very efficient and very effective way to, to deal with, uh, those arraignments. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad that, that we're, we're dealing with that. I also loved the idea of the, the social bubbles that, that you guys are testing inmates before you move them into the general population. And, and it's almost a, a pod, as it were. And so, um, well done. And, and well done on the veterans barracks. That's a, that's just a, it's a great addition. Um, last thing, and this is something that, that, that we really need to look at. We've talked about this, I don't know how many times. It's, it's more times than I can, I can actually remember, that, that the jail, this is a sad comment, um, the jail has become our largest mental health facility in northern Nevada. And I remember when Dr. Sloanum from, um, Renown came to town and, uh, he and I were talking and I said, have you toured the largest mental health facility in northern Nevada yet? And he said, oh, yeah, I've been over to the NAMs campus. And I said, no, it's the jail. And he was astounded that, that that was the case. We've got to do something about that because we cannot have mental health patients incarcerated. It's not a good way to deal with them. And, and sadly, it, it's what ends up happening. So I'm, I'm looking forward to serving more of these patients through our place. And I know that staff is working on that and, and I, I, I believe we're moving towards that. And so I just, uh, I, I, I think that it's something that we should, in, in the, the next strategic planning session, make that part of our strategic plan, that that's something that we need to deal with, mental health and, and drug and alcohol addiction, of course. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you, Chief Deputy Clark. Well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. Madam Vice Chair, I have you sitting next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to chime in on the one-dollar, uh, meal. That's amazing, um, truly amazing. I need to come over and take some advice because I should be doing that at my house. Um, and a very, very good job on that. But I also wanted to tell you guys how impressed I am with the sta, stats regarding suicides and, um, and battery. You guys are really doing a bang-up job in making sure that these people who are clearly under stress and distress of some kind are, who, because they're there in the first place, are, are being watched and carefully protected from the, um, problems that are associated with being in jail. And I'm really happy to see that the, um, the suicide problem is being addressed and being handled. And I just, I'm so impressed with everything you guys do. Thank you so much. Deputy Clark, you are top-notch, as is, is your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I appreciate that. Um, I have nobody else signed in on this this morning. Um, but we, we will move on. So, all right, we have, uh, we've talked about this now. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We have no emails.
Do we have anybody signed in via Zoom? All right. Seeing nobody signed in via Zoom or public comments, we'll bring it back to the board. Seeing no further discussion at this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the report. Now, let's proceed to the report. Madam, Commissioner Harton.
Motion to accept the report.
All right.
And thank, and thank Sheriff Balaam and his staff for the hard work and look forward to seeing the next one.
Great. Thank you. I have a motion. Uh, Commissioner Herman, I heard a second from you as well. All right. So I have a motion and a second, uh, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, signify. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item seventeen, and at this time, before we move into item seventeen, I need to make a disclosure in regards to this item, and I will turn, and then turning over the floor to the vice chair. At this time, I need to make a disclosure. In this next item, in item seventeen, Megan Lucy is my wife. She is a principal of the Burkitts Lucy Law Group, through which she provides legal advice and consultation for clients for compensation. Megan has maintained a contract with Washoe County for the last three years to provide professional services as an independent contractor for the Human Services Agency as a VOCA Victim Service Coordinator. On item seventeen on today's agenda, the agenda of today's meeting involves the renewal of Megan's contract. I have consulted with the district attorney about the ethics and laws and other legal decision-making standards, whether my relationship with my wife creates any legal duties. And the the actions I am taking today are based upon the advice of legal counsel. There is a commitment in private capacity to the interests of others in addition to the pecuniary interest here due to my family relationship. I'm abstaining from participating or voting on Megan's contract under NRS two eight one A point four two zero. Madam Vice Chair and Madam Clerk, please have the record reflect that I'm abstaining from this item for item seventeen. At this time, I will recuse myself from the chambers and allow Madam Vice Chair to run this following item. So with that, I'm going to step out of the room.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you step, reading that for the public so they know what's going on. And with that, we will go to Mr. Manager.
All right, well, I'd just like to commend the chair for bringing this item to the agenda in the first place. This is not something that generally would be required in terms of review of the matter, but it was important to the chair to disclose and and under the banner of transparency, and I think that's to be commended. Madam Vice Chair, I believe we have Amber Howell available this morning to talk about this item? No, she's not there? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, anyone have any questions on this? I know it is simply a renewal of a contract that's been in place for some time.
Well, yeah, and and I just, I wanted to, Mr. Manager, you mentioned that it would not be required to be reviewed. Is that because of the size of the contract?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, okay. And then I know, I think this is the fourth time that we have reviewed Ms. Lucy's contract.
I believe so, yes.
And originally, the contract went out to bid, and she was chosen as the qualified applicant.
That is correct.
And so it wasn't, it wasn't something that was done under the table. I mean, she, she's a very competent lawyer.
And and she's done a very effective job.
She's done an extremely effective job. I've had numerous conversations with staff about about how effective she is and what a great job she's done. So I mean, I, that's, those are just some of the things I wanted to put on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman.
Hartung.
I mean, Commissioner Hartung, sorry.
Thank you.
Do I, I'm not looking at, do we have any public comment?
I have no emails.
Okay, we have no public comment? Yes, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you. I just want to say and echo what all of you have said. And I can tell you, this is probably one of the most difficult legal jobs there are that is always full of complaints. And I compare Ms. Megan Lucy to Assemblywoman Teresa Benitez Thompson, who used to work for the county, and really was able to break some barriers, but had to leave the job because she was so busy with her legislative duties. And I think Ms. Lucy should take this across the country, her services, because she has absolutely made sure that victims and the vulnerable have a legal voice so that their lives will be improved and that we will have permanent placement of children who are eligible for adoption, among other things. So I can't think of anybody better. She's a role model to me in this area because I know it is still very hard. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve, please.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Jung. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from, a motion from Commissioner Jung, a second from Commissioner Hartung, and does any, any other comments?
Under discussion, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Jung. I I couldn't agree more. I I know the great work that she does. I think it's important to also point out that that this also is tied to a very large grant, and we need someone who can work in that capacity to administrate that. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited. Thank you.
Okay. Here, seeing no other comments, and we've done public comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. With Chair Lucy abstaining or actually stepping out, not even abstaining, stepping out of the meeting because it would be a conflict of ethics. So thank you very much. And with that, motion carries for two nothing. So with that, we will move on to public comment. Item eighteen, Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, Nate Edwards, real quick, I think you could get Commissioner Lucy, and he could come back in at this point.
Yes, he's walking in the door right now.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner Lucy?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the rest of my commission working with me in regards to that issue. All right, we are on to our final public comment of the day. And with that, Madam Clerk, do we have, it shows I have an email from Ellie Masabki.
Did you want the manager to introduce the item?
Let me introduce.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate, I'm sorry.
Public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Manager, I appreciate that. Sorry, my apologies. Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have received an email from Ellie Masabki, which I will read into the record. Hello, I would like to submit the following statement to be read at the next Board of Board meeting on August twenty-fifth. I am an Incline Village homeowner with primary residence in California, and my family uses the property several times a year for personal use. I rent my secondary residence in Incline to vacationers to help with the mortgage expenses. I'm not in the property rental business. I have registered my property and pay Washoe County taxes on my rental home. I have been self-managing the property for several years, and I have strict house rules in my rental agreement that all my guests sign, and they cover all of the concerns that residents and stakeholders have expressed regarding noise, parking, occupancy limits, and trash. I'm very concerned about the proposed rule that requires a property manager or representative to be local, located locally. As the owner of the property and unlike most property managers or representatives, I am available twenty-four seven to respond to complaints. I have the greatest interest in my property and well-being of my neighbors. I don't see the need for a property manager or representative to be located locally. I have successfully managed my property remotely for several years. If the occupancy rules cannot be enforced through verbal communication with the guests by phone, in-person enforcement can only be achieved effectively and safely by the police. Imposing a requirement for a local representative or property manager will force me to incur unnecessary additional costs without clear benefits to the community that cannot be achieved with my remote management of the property. I would like to request that the following clause be modified in such a way that the words local and onsite be stricken from the following clause in the requirement. Every STR must have a designated local responsible party available twenty-four seven through a single phone number who shall respond to complaints within thirty minutes of contact via text or phone acceptable. If an onsite response is necessary, it should occur within the following hour. Thank you, Ellie Masabki, Incline Village.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, and Ms. Masabki's email will be placed on the record for the meeting today. Do we have any Zoom, do we have any Zoom public comment? Seeing no further public comment from Zoom, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we're on to item nineteen.
Item number ten is Commissioners, County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include Boards and Commission updates, requests for information, and topics for future agendas.
All right, Mr. Manager, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time, or any requests?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Vice Chair, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the Tahoe Transportation District, which is looking at ways to finance additional transportation in the lake basin, which, of course, is probably important in light of the fact that getting around the lake these days is next to impossible. But the, there's a number of things they're looking at, and they are considering a piece of legislation to go to the next legislature. Prior to that happening, I would like to have them come before the full commission and make a presentation on what they're looking at and what the ideas are. And so I will keep you posted, Commissioners and Mr. Manager, as to when we are at that stage. But I think one of the things that's being considered is the possibility of charging a fee to go into the basin. And so, you know, that's, that doesn't just impact people in the basin, of course, it impacts all of us who just want to take a drive one day and drive around the lake. And so, you know, we have to really seriously look at how that will impact people who live in the basin, and that's, or I mean, who don't live in the basin but live nearby, us, our our constituents who live here in the valley, Carson City, Douglas County, all of those people would really be impacted by that. So I I want to make sure that you guys are on top, know what's going on, and we will ask them to come and make a presentation before us at that time. Additionally, it is my understanding that Tahoe Transportation District has received grants from NDOT and, I think, a national grant, two grants, I think, that would allow them to buy the old schoolhouse in Incline Village for purposes of a, a putting in a transfer station, a bus transfer station. That is not something that the citizens who live in Incline Village are interested in seeing happen. So as you can imagine, there will be some problems, but they will, I will ask Carl Hasty to come and make a presentation to the the county commission prior to actually signing any documentation with the counties, with the school district. Okay? Nothing else, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's interesting, Madam Vice Chair, that's, that they want to essentially put up a toll booth, is is what that is, and I believe that's illegal in Nevada currently under under statute. So I, because there are, I I know of no toll booths in Nevada. It, it, for all intents and purposes, that's, that's kind of what it is. It's, so, so, yeah, I I look forward to hearing that, that, that item and that concept. One of the thing, other things that I wanted to mention to the the commission is if we have the ability to do some CARES Act funding for the Boys and Girls Club, if if we have some additional funding through that, that that does need to be spent prior to the expiration, I'd really like us to, Mr. Manager, look at the Boys and Girls Club here in in the area. I mean, it's just, they they do great work. I mean, there's just absolutely no question that they're very effective, they're very efficient, and.
Commissioner, those discussions are underway.
They're underway? Okay, perfect. I just wanted to, want to keep it alive. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you. Couple things I'd like to put on, have put on the agenda. I did have a meeting with Ms. Holigetsky of Nevada Cooperative Extension, of which you know, Commissioners, that we fund through the county pretty heavily and support that program. I know Manager Thomas has met with myself and and Dr. Ivory Lyles, who runs the program as the director, but Dr. Getzky is the administrator for the north and north of the northern rural counties. And like to look at some programs potentially that we can jointly, you know, we need to, and Commissioner Herman has been a big champion of this, is how do we utilize those funds properly throughout our community to help bolster those individuals that may not have access to education and whatnot? She did show her budgeting, what she's looking at doing, and what she's working for, and very, very robust programming. But I think it'd be good to have her come and present in front of the commission with Dr. Ivory Lyles and have their program presented to us so that we can kind of gave them some guidance in regards to cooperative extension. I think there's some, some great opportunities, especially now through the COVID pandemic and some of the monies that we're utilizing for CARES to help with outreach to some of our communities. They've shown that 4H is highly productive with individuals within the community in regards to showing, building structure and programming. And I know many of these, many members on this board were active in 4H in their younger years, and it's a, it's a wonderful program, but there's so much more than 4H and Nevada Cooperative Extension. So just like to see that come back and have a more robust discussion about that and how we can participate in in guiding those discussions. And then Commissioner, Madam Vice Chair, as you mentioned, the Reno Tahoe, the Tahoe Basin with transit, you know, obviously, at the RTC Board, there was a three hundred thousand dollar project that gives, we give three hundred thousand from RTC each year to Tahoe for transit. And I understand that the Tahoe, Truckee Tahoe Transportation District, the TTD, also received CARES money. So what they're going to use, what we're going to use those savings for is to pilot a program that will do the Reno Tahoe Transit Project to run buses to and from the Tahoe Basin that would hopefully work with, in conjunction with the Tahoe, Tahoe Transportation District, the TTD, to minimize some of that impact of those, of those individuals that are traveling to and from the basin so that we don't have all those cars and congestion and parking. So that is a, those are some positive things. And then one last thing, as, you know, you know, as Commissioner Hartung brought up the CARES money, I think another thing we need to continue to look at is how we can improve, continue to improve our our testing here and how we can do our outreach with our families. I think one of the biggest thing that we have challenges with within our community right now, and I know the manager has worked diligently on this in regards to hiring a firm for public outreach and through the comms team, that they're working on putting those programming together. But what we can do to help bolster the community in regards to education about coronavirus, self-assessment, quarantine, how you can work through this, you know, and and one of the challenging things that we see in the media all the time is you get maybe the new positives, or we talk about deaths, what we're not talking about is the load on our hospitals, frequently enough, the hospitalization. Yes, we do have significant new cases, it seems like, every day, and there's no denying that, those, the data is the data. However, our active cases remain in flux and pretty stable, honestly. We're about a thousand cases actively amongst about a half million in population here. And so those are some interesting stats, and as long as we continue to work through the data and work through how, what that looks like, I'm very optimistic that Washoe County will continue to endure and be, and work through this with our hospitals and our partners in the community. But once again, we just got to continue to figure out ways to help educate the community in some of our different communities in regards to how they can better take care of themselves. And I, I can't urge this enough, it goes back to just basic sanitation routines. Wash your hands, maintain that social distance, try to be as proactive as you can, but this is, we're on this together, so I want to thank everybody for that participation. That's all I have left. I have no other commissioners signed in. Commissioner Jung, did you have anything you'd like to add today?
Thank you, I think that was a great ending.
All right, with that, we will bring it back to the board. We have nothing else, no other business today, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Bye, guys.
Bye, thank you.